Good evening and welcome to the Marlington Local School District Board of Education meeting of Wednesday, April 26, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation Evan Dennison.
Dear Lord, I pray that we have a good meeting tonight. I pray that you give wisdom to our board members as they discuss our future and you provide everyone with a safe ride home. We thank you for getting everyone here. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Rule call please.
Josh Hagan?
Here.
Karen Humphreys?
Here.
Kathy Krupko?
Here.
Mark Ryan?
Here.
Jonathan Swift?
Here.
Nace Minor?
Here.
Thank you. Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Are there additions or corrections to the meeting agenda?
Yes, sir. There is one addition, correction. Recommend the motion to approve the following preferred substitute for the school year. Verification pending satisfactory credentials, BCI, FBI checks as required. Janice Luke. That would be added to the agenda.
Okay, added to the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second? Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Special presentation.
Okay, so here we are at the special presentations. So we're going to start with our April Students of the Month. So we're going to have Mr. Farrell from the high school come on up and present the high school Elks Students of the Month.
Good evening. I have the honor of recognizing two of our finest students here from the high school tonight. Our first Elks Student of the Month is Emma Jackson. Emma, could you come forward, please? Emma's the daughter of Chip and Melanie Jackson. She's an executive member of Character Counts Club, a member of Student Council, and Secretary of Rotary Interact Club. Emma is a captain and four-year letter winner on the varsity softball team and former goalie on the varsity soccer team. She is a Duke crew leader, member of National Honor Society, and Spanish National Honor Society. Following graduation, Emma has committed to continue her academic and softball careers at West Virginia Wesleyan College and pursue a degree in computer science. Emma's teachers say she's a fantastic student and exceptional leader in the building. She's often seen helping out around the building in various capacities, whether that is tutoring students or working as an office aide. She's volunteered her time helping underclassmen, particularly in science, and her efforts have been applauded by staff, students, and parents. She's the type of student who works well with everyone and makes everyone around her better. Her experiences serve her well in the years to come as she takes on even bigger leadership roles. Emma, it's my pleasure to recognize you as an Elks Teen of the Month. Congratulations. Our other Elks Teen of the Month at the high school is Evan Dennison. Evan, come forward, please. Evan is the son of Christopher and Rebecca Dennison. He is a member of the Marching Dukes of Marlington, Concert Band, Marlington Corral, and Drama Dukes. Evan is a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, the Treasurer of the Robotics Club, and a member of the Chess Club. Evan spends his free time acting with the Carnation City Players. He enjoys math, science, musical theater, playing the clarinet, and singing. Following graduation, Evan plans to continue his acting career in college while pursuing degrees in chemistry and music. Evan's teachers say he is a very mature, responsible, and polite young man. He is an exceptional student who always goes above and beyond what is required. He's often seen around the school participating in various activities or clubs and making those a better experience for all involved. He always has a smile on his face and his positive energy and attitude is contagious to everyone around him. Evan has a bright future and is very deserving of this recognition. Evan, congratulations on being named an Elks Teen of the Month. Next up, middle school principal, Mr. Rizaletti. Middle School would like to recognize two Students of the Month, and first up, we have Michael Foss. Michael is the son of Margaret and Robert Foss. His teachers have this to say about him. Michael's an extremely hard worker who goes above and beyond to expand his knowledge. His quiet kindness is appreciated by all those around him. Michael's a respectful young man. He's always on task and does his work very thoughtfully. He's a quiet leader and works well with whoever he's partnered with in the classroom. Michael's one of the hardest workers we've ever had in class. He even volunteers at the Alliance Community Pantry where he gives back to his community. We're very proud of Michael Foss. And next up, we have Bryn Reese. Bryn is the daughter of Jennifer and Chad Reese. Here's what her teachers have to say about her. Bryn is a determined, hard-working young lady. She knows what she wants and how to get there. She's willing to help others and set an example to fellow classmates. Bryn has a smile that's infectious. If she's smiling, you know others around her will be too. Bryn's a very thoughtful young lady who always works hard and takes great pride in doing great work. Bryn's a very dedicated student who works hard every day, not just for the grade but to truly understand the material. She's generous and kind, tries her best no matter how challenging something may be. And Bryn displays a never-give-up attitude. This will carry her well through all her future endeavors. We're very proud of Bryn Reese. Next up is Mrs. Weber, Lexington Elementary.
Good evening. I don't believe that our Kwanis Student of the Month is here today, Ms. Paige Reed. So we're going to talk a little bit about Paige. She is our Kwanis fifth-grade student of the month at Lexington, and her teachers selected her because she's an exceptional student. She works hard on her classwork, always pays attention in class, and will help any of the other students in our class if they're struggling on an assignment. She is incredibly considerate of others, which I believe, this is written by Mrs. Kellums, is one of the reasons her peers have elected her to be Student Council Representative this year. Staff members can count on her when they need a respectful, responsible student to help out. Paige also has a fun sense of humor, a bright smile, and she adds positivity to the classroom every day. A couple things about Paige, if you wanted to know. Her favorite subject is science, and what she has to say about her family, especially her pets, is that she has a very tiny dog. And then she also, one day, would like to be a person who helps animals in some form. One thing she'd like us to know about herself is that she's very flexible and she loves to go on walks in her free time. Paige Reed.
Next up, Mrs. Mort, Marlboro Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Marlboro Elementary's April Kwanis Student of the Month, Quinn Dale. So a little bit about Quinn from his teachers. Quinn is new to Marlboro Elementary this year and has made a great name for himself in fifth grade. He is likable, kind, and humble. Prior to this school year, Quinn was in a homeschool setting, and we are so glad that he is at Marlboro Elementary this year. He is a focused learner who works hard in and out of the classroom and has been a wonderful addition to our fifth-grade class. Quinn was chosen for this honor due to his ability to adapt to new situations and thrive in an unfamiliar environment. We were happy to welcome Quinn this past fall, and we are thrilled to have him in class with us as we grow together in education and friendship. Quinn, we are immensely proud of your growth this year and wish your continued success. From your teachers, buddy. Good job. A little more about Quinn. His favorite subject in school is social studies because he thinks history is really cool and Mrs. Beatles makes it fun. Some other special things about Quinn's family. Mom and dad are Heather and Rick, and his seventeen-year-old brother is Gabe, and they're in the back. Next up, Mr. Spandiel from Washington Elementary.
Good evening, everybody. I am honored tonight to introduce our Kwanis Student of the Month at Washington, Piper Stranansky. Okay. Piper, her teacher said about her, is a kind person who works hard in school. She's a great friend and an even better student. Piper strives to do well in all areas of school. She is smart, funny, and kind to everyone. She has a wonderful personality, and you can see Piper smiling at all times during the school day. She is willing to help the other students in her class, and we are certain she will be successful in middle school and far beyond because of all these traits and many, many more. Her favorite subject in school is art and science. She lives at home with her mom, her dad, her sister, and her brother. She also has a dog and a cat, and she enjoys going on family vacations with everybody. After school, she hopes to be a veterinarian, and one day she would enjoy visiting Paris, France. Piper really enjoys hanging out with all of her friends and running, and one of her special talents is she is an excellent artist and she's especially good at drawing. And I've seen her art in person, and it is really, really good, so we hope she continues that hobby as she gets older. Congratulations, Piper.
Okay, before we dismiss the students, the parents, and the Students of the Month, so congratulations to them, we have one more special presentation tonight. So if I could have Mr. Bill Coe, please step up here. So before I hand it over to Mr. Miller, let him talk a few minutes about Mr. Coe. I'm just going to do a big... Mr. Coe retired as an educator in Marlington from Marlington Local Schools. He was forty years as an educator. Thirty-six of those years was with Marlington. Matter of fact, I think he retired when I was middle school principal. Bill retired. I give you the best story about Bill is, you know, as a principal, you have to evaluate a teacher. All right? So you go in there and you sit down at the teacher's desk and you watch them teach a lesson. They present it in front. Bill's got like a, I recall, it's like what you see on a refrigerator for like a grocery list, like a little slip of paper. He's got it stuck there on his desk. All reasons I may retire, you know, because at this point, he's, you know, pushing forty years. And it's email, email, internet, email. You know, the list was all tech reason. So it's a, I had to get a giggle when I was going through this, but he has not stopped. He is, I think he is at ten years as an Alliance School Board member currently and still an Alliance School Board member. Actively involved in Marlington, actively involved in Alliance in many different aspects. I brought him here tonight because he's also worked for the last thirty-five years as our migrant custodian. So he works all summer as our custodian for our migrant program, which in itself is just absolutely amazing. So that was the reason why, you know, I asked him to come tonight, but it's not the real reason why we asked him to come tonight. So I'm going to ask Mr. Miller to step up and speak a few words for Mr. Coe.
Mr. Coe started our softball program from scratch with a couple bats and a couple softballs. So they told me I wasn't here at that time. Third in the state of Ohio, and we've enjoyed winning seasons for a long, long time. During his twenty-six-year career, he ran one of the best programs in the state of Ohio, winning three hundred and sixty-five games, eleven sectional titles, seven MBC titles, league titles, three district titles, and of course, we've seen the signs that have been up for a long, long time, one state title. But Bill, we're not here because of just the wins. We are here because everybody in here that came for a visit knows the man of Bill Coe. He did it the right way, and I don't think we would be here celebrating all the wins if he hadn't done it the right way. He didn't recruit. He took the township girls that came to him, molded them, gave them passion, gave them an understanding of the game, made them better players, and of course, better people, and won a lot of games along the way. He abided by all the rules set forth by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Some coaches have a hard time with that, but he abided by the rules and still won anyway. Bill, you gave passion, a love of the game, and a desire to get better, and you instilled that in our girls, and as I said, it lives on to this day. Most of all, Bill, I can say this because I remember coaching and being with you before you retired. You loved your girls, and they loved you. On behalf of the Marlington Athletic Department and speaking for the thousands of former Duke softball players, I am honored to request from the Board of Education that from here on, our varsity softball field be going as Bill Coe Field.
Thank you very much, Board Education. I know you had to vote on this, so thank you very much. Mr. Swisher, I don't know about you. I got this letter in the mail to come to this so we could celebrate service for the migrant program. And as I was sitting here, I see my family come in. And lots of friends in the background, so I knew you didn't come to celebrate me sweeping the floors and dumping the trash for the migrant program. So this is a very humbling award, I'll tell you. We received a lot of awards over the years, and it was nothing I had to do with it a whole lot. I had excellent, excellent coaches. In fact, Sean Dillon and Ken Zupanic were with me both for over twenty years, and that's unheard of with assistants. You know, Chris Middleton was with us, Steph Koblenz, who is in one of the schools now. She was with us for a few years, too. But the number of girls that we had, I once had a conversation, I had a chance to meet Woody Hayes, and he had his troubles, but he told me one time, "You win with people," and boy, did we have the people. We had, I don't know how many girls that were all league, all section, all district. We had three or four of them were all state. They went on to play in college, and some of the records that they set are still with Ohio High School Athletic Association. So we had a lot of, a lot of good players. Then I had a chance to meet Jim Tressel. He was a good friend of Dale Herbert, who's sitting in the back there, and I had a chance to talk to him, and he said, "Surround yourself with good people, and you'll have success." And I did with the assistance I had. Dale helped us out sometime. Mark Young, who was on the staff here still, did some weight training with the girls, exercise science. And of course, the first year that I was hired, Mayor Andrew Enney was superintendent. He hired me, so I'll put some of the blame on him. But it was a great experience. The girls, we had a lot of fun. I had never had any discipline whatsoever, problems with the girls, and we had fun. We traveled different places, and we had tremendous a lot of fun. They did a lot of fun things to me, too, which, which some of them I can't discuss here, but I'll give you one good story and then we'll move on. We're up in Cleveland. We played a doubleheader against Central Catholic High School, and after the game was over, I asked the girls, "Do you want to stop at McDonald's?" And of course, they all said yes. So we were all eating there, and a couple of girls went to the restroom. Well, they didn't come out, and I'm still sitting there. A couple more went in. Still about four more went in. Next thing I know, the whole team's in the restroom. So I'm thinking, "Oh, somebody fell. Something's wrong." So they called me, "Coach Coe, come into this restroom." And I said, "What's the matter?" He said, "You gotta see this. You gotta see this." So I walked into the restroom, and there's stalls there, and there were five of them on this side of the toilet bowl and five on this side. The others were standing in the other stalls looking over the top, and I said, "What's the matter? What's the matter?" And they said, "Watch this." And one of the girls sat down on the toilet and stood up, and the seat rotated real fast. And I said, "What's wrong with it?" And they said, "Well, it's some new piece of equipment that is installed in women's restrooms so you can sit down, and when you stand up, it cleans itself." So we're standing in there, so they said, "Sit down." So I sat on this thing. I stood up. It spun around. And next thing I know, the manager came in. She said, "What's going on here? What's going on?" And I said, "Well, these girls, we're from someplace, and we haven't seen anything like this." So she said, "Where are you from?" And I said, "Well, we're from Carrollton, Ohio." Because I didn't want to say, "We're from Elias," because it looked like a bunch of hillbillies in the restroom. So that's just one of the stories, but I have a whole bunch more. But this is indeed an honor and again, Board Education, Athletic Director, staff of Marlington, thank you. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll have an official dedication. This sign will go under our scoreboard on the softball field. The guys are on it tomorrow. They tell me that they'll get that up for us ASAP. And then Tuesday, May 2nd, if you'd like to write this down, before our varsity plays Salem, we'll have an official dedication. We'll get Mr. Coe out to throw out the first pitch, and we'll start that at four forty-five. The game starts at five.
Yeah, I'm going to do it right now. Mr. Coe wanted to make sure everybody can leave now so they don't have to sit through the board meeting. Because if anything you don't know about Mr. Coe, and I talked about his teaching and his work ethic and has it continues, he arrived at work before anybody got to the middle school. He worked in the seventh grade. He would open every single door for every single teacher, every single day he was there. So, and he never called in sick. So it was like, maybe in a rare opportunity, he was not there, the teachers freaked out because they came to work and their doors were locked. They didn't even have keys. And that was just how he is. On that note, I did tell him over here that, you know, because he's an Alliance School Board member, he actually has a meeting that night, but the Alliance School Board has graciously adjusted their time schedule for May 2nd, you know, so we can get the dedication to the field in before you do your official duties. You're welcome. So, other than that, we are going to move on to the formal part of the board meeting, so this would be the time for you to exit if you choose. Thank you for coming out tonight. All right, roll. Okay, as we move on here to the formal part of the presentation, we're going to start with our OSBA presentation with Mrs. Kathy Krupko.
Okay, the OSBA has gotten very busy. They have a lot of legislative reports to give out. House Bill forty-seven, I'm going to try to skip through who sponsored it, is being discussed, which would require each school to place an automatic external defibrillator, an AED, in each building. They're also proposing that each district and school be required to provide training to teachers, principals, administrative employees, coaches, athletic trainers, and any person who supervises interscholastic athletics. The districts would also be required to hold informational meetings about symptoms and warning signs of sudden cardiac arrest for all ages of students before the start of any athletic season. It also requires the district It also requires the district to adopt an emergency action plan for the use of AEDs. The Department of Health would be charged with creating a model plan for district use. The plan has to be practiced at least quarterly, and it's currently pending in House Health Provider Services Committee. House Bill 63 is one that they're discussing that would require schools to provide age-appropriate classroom instruction on conflict resolution in grades K through 12. That bill is pending in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. House Bill 103 would create Social Studies Standards Task Force that would consist of nine members, some appointed by various, the Governor, Speaker of the House, and President of the Senate would each appoint individuals to that task force. And they would be charged with developing statewide academic standards in social studies for grades K through 12, and there's a lot of specifications that go with that. It's not yet been referred to a committee in the House. Senate Bill 49 would require school boards to adopt a policy that accommodates the sincerely held religious beliefs of students as it relates to exams, other academic requirements, and absences for faith or religious belief. The policy will allow up to three religious expression days each year for students, and it must include a language that a student who's absent for a religious expression day is allowed to attend interscholastic events or other extracurricular activities on those days that they were absent. It also has to provide a procedure for students to notify the school of any grievance regarding implementation of the policy. Under this bill, the schools would be prohibited from imposing academic penalties because of student absence, and schools would be prohibited from considering absences when determining absence hours that require parental notification. The bill specifies that students must be given alternative accommodations if they miss exams or other academic requirements. National Teacher Appreciation Week is May 8th through 12th. It was introduced to Congress by Eleanor Roosevelt in 1953. It is a time when schools around the country honor teachers for all they contribute to students' lives and to society as a whole. The OSBA Student Achievement Fair is seeking innovative programs, so if our district has any innovative student programs, talented performing groups, or amazing artists, we need to be sure to nominate them for the OSBA Capital Conference Student Achievement Fair. Deadline for performing groups to be nominated is May 17th, and then there is a deadline of October 27th for presentations of artwork and programs. Josh, I believe you are the Student Achievement Liaison for the OSBA, so if there are teachers or administrators who have a particular group that they would like to see highlighted at the Student Achievement Fair at the OSBA Conference in November, please see Josh about what that would entail. The Ohio EPA is encouraging Environmental Excellence in Education Program, recognizing K through 12 in public or private schools for their achievements in environmental stewardship and their efforts to educate students on environmental topics. The deadline for that is coming up April 30th. Ohio School Safety Center is accepting nominations through May 31st for the first Ohio School Safety Standout Awards, which will recognize two students and two staff members who have made significant contributions to school safety and security through their commitment, efforts, and leadership. Contest and nominations are open to K through 12 and higher education students and school staff. In 2023, we will be having an Ohio School Safety Summit, July 25th and 26th, at the Columbus Convention Center. There are testimony opportunities coming up in the next week on the income tax cut that's being proposed, school funding, transportation, Ed Choice vouchers. Oh, God, there's a third page. And multiple other things. So if you have any, there is, we have an OSBA website that will deal with all of that, and they are encouraging administrators to read through what they're talking about and provide our input as required. Let's see here. The House Higher Education Committee held a third hearing on House Bill 6, which would enact the Save Women's Sports Act. The bill would require schools, state institutions of higher education, and private colleges to designate separate single-sex teams in sports for each sex. So they're still discussing that. It has not come to a vote yet. The Senate Finance Committee held testimony on the executive budget proposal for fiscal years 2024 and 2025. They have amended and passed Senate Bill 6, which was sponsored by our local Senator Kirk Schering, which would prohibit the state teachers' retirement system and school employment retirement system, among others, from making investment decisions for the primary purpose of influencing environmental, social, and corporate governance policies. There was a group of us who attended the Northeast Ohio Regional Conference last month. There were several excellent speakers, including one from Peoples and Wagner, a Mr. Kevin Locke, who discussed levees. And if you want to give that to Bob, he can have my copy of whatever they discussed at that. And I also yesterday attended the April Forum for the OSBA, and there was a lot of discussion on how the OSBA, BASSO, which is the administrators' organization, the organization that collaborates all the ESCs, are all working together to provide collaborative work from all those organizations to benefit education in Ohio. That's it on that one. They've been busy. They're going to go on break soon. Reports will get short.
Any questions for Kathy from OSBA? All right, Kathy, we're going to stay with you. Do you have an OHSAA update?
Okay. I was recently named to a liaison committee between the OHSAA, the Ohio Athletic Association, and the OSBA. That meeting was, it was a two-hour meeting in Columbus last month, or, I'm sorry, April 13th. We got a chance to meet one of the executive directors, who was absolutely phenomenal. He discussed the fact that several years ago, they were just about bankrupt, and through some conserving of cash and better management of funds, they now have a $12 million operating cash surplus, and they have taken there, have taken out of that $3 million to invest and support the mission of the OHSAA. They did some restructuring, and for the first time ever, required schools, especially during COVID, to pay a fee for participation, which was $100 per sport, per school. That has been reduced now, that they've got a surplus going of $50 per sport, per school. They are now operating in the black. They're staying on budget. We discussed where they actually gain their money. One of the concerns that Steve and I had talked about before I went to the meeting was that, at certain levels, when we send our kids to state competition, which we're incredibly happy for them and proud to do, we don't get any reimbursement back from the OHSAA. So it is a little bit of a financial burden to the school. However, they informed us that really they make their money on the early events, the early rounds of any state tournament, basketball, football, that you're hosting, that we can make money hosting those events. That's really where the OHSAA makes most of their money outside of the school fees. Towards the end, when you get into the final rounds, not many people attend. Not a lot of schools will let coaches and teachers and students out to go and support those events, so there isn't a lot of income from ticket prices, and yet they still have to pay venues and all of that stuff. They are not allowed to share in the profits from any of those events, which is why they've set up this $3 million fund, and they are hoping this year, the plan is, for them to give $1,200 back to each school, each participating school, which Steve tells me will bring us, will help cover all of those expenses. It's going to go on a year-by-year basis. They hope if funds keep going as well as they've been going, maybe next year it's $2,000, maybe each year that amount will increase. So that's their plan. We also discussed the environment, the area, where athletic events are taking place. We have lost a lot of officials, and some of it that they're telling us is because of the environment at the schools that they're officiating at, unruly crowds, unruly parents, unruly coaches. As they went through all of the things that they're recommending that schools do to prevent a bad environment, I was really proud to sit there and think, "We're already doing all of those things. Our faculty managers know what they're supposed to do. We have athletic directors and administrators at every single event that handle situations before they ever get out of hand." I was at a recent basketball game and watched Mr. Miller come up into the stands and remove a couple of students who were sitting in the middle of the parent section, creating issues. So we're staying on top of it. Our kids are respectful. Our administrators are doing a fantastic job. Our ticket sales, our faculty managers, all of that. We are on top of all of the recommendations that they're, they've put out there. So kudos to our athletic department and all of our administrators. They are trying to address the issue of officiating shortages. Steve said that he's aware of it. There are some companies that they are working with, and I talked to both Steve and Dan about this, that will help us include officiating classes in career tech. Officials can start as young as age 14, but if you have ever seen a 14-year-old referee or umpire a baseball game when you've got angry parents, it's pretty overwhelming. So they're willing to come in and mentor and do a lot of stuff to help us get a surplus so that as these kids get older and are adults, they're officiating at a better level. You have to be, I believe it's 18, to officiate a varsity event. So one of the suggestions they had is if you've canceled a game because of weather, now you've got a varsity game and a freshman game at the same time, you can use younger officials for the freshman game and pull the older individuals for, to officiate at the varsity game. So it gives us a little more flexibility. Mental health care for coaches, staff, and student athletes is a big focus. They're working on a collaborative program with the Ohio State University to facilitate that. AEDs was one of their big topics, and making sure that everybody knows where they are, how to use them, and when to use them. We were told that one of the issues that is being discussed is what to do with the gambling profits, not the lottery stuff, but now that we can go and bet places. I don't know anything about that, but they're looking at how to spend the gambling profits. And one of the House bills actually suggested that some of it go to athletics, and some of it go into other educational pieces and certain percentages. So there's a lot of discussion going on about that, but the Secretary of State is adamant that he would like to eliminate pay-to-play, and they're discussing how, what's that, what that is going to look like, because not every school in the state of Ohio does pay-to-play. So they're trying to figure out how to equitably deliver that money as it's needed. They've changed some summer contact dates. They are looking currently at division alignments. It's reviewed every two, two years. They have sent out messages to AEDs and also coaches, reminding them to get that information, to get the misinformation in, because once you are set in a division, that's it. There's, there's no getting out of it. So if, if by error, because somebody didn't look at the numbers right, a small school gets placed in Division 1, they're stuck there for two years. There's not even a way to pay a penalty to get out of it. They're asking all coaches, or all schools, to please stay on top of reviewing academic requirements. The biggest black hole that they've found that students keep falling into is when they're taking college courses. And when they choose to drop a college course, it's not always quickly, you're not always quickly notified, and then suddenly you have a top student, a top athlete, who is no longer eligible because they don't carry enough credits. So that was the gist of that meeting.
It's a good meeting.
It was a good meeting, very good meeting. Both of them were.
Do we have any questions for Mrs. Krupko on OHSAA?
I will tell you, they're, they're very focused on making sure that school, school boards maintain local control over most situations.
That's good. Thank you. Good reports. Okay, we're going to start with, have Nash Minor come up and give his report. Our student board representative is going to give his report. I learned by nessin Nash that you shouldn't be anywhere near your report now.
Good, good. It seems like it's, so much time has gone by since the last time I was here, and really a lot has been going on in the meantime. So I try to just give a good little, like you toss a pebble on a pond, and you just hit, just skip over the water, just get a little bit of everything of what's going on. So on the academic side, we are currently in, deep in Ohio State testing across all the buildings. We have, in the high school, every Tuesday and Wednesday, getting the test done, but it seems to be going smoothly from what I'm told, so that's always good to hear, and everyone's been saying that it's been not too bad. So we're really getting close to the end now. Looking at extracurriculars, Character Counts has a blood drive coming up, so they've been getting people to sign up for that these past two weeks, and going to be getting that to go. They've been really successful. The last one we did earlier in the fall was actually one of the most successful we've had here at school history, so we're hoping to surpass that and keep getting a lot of donations. The Spanish National Honor Society just had a paint night the other night, where they invited parents and students to come for a small fee to learn just how to paint a simple scene that was, had a Spanish culture to it. It was really a fun night. I heard a lot of positive things with that, so hopefully we can do that again in the future. Hort Culture has a spring sale coming up, May 13th, so just keep an eye out for that. There's going to be a lot of really great flowers and arrangements coming, so that is going to be a huge sale that can help out our hort community. FFA has a fishing derby coming up. They've been advertising a lot for this. Last year, I heard it was pretty successful, so we're hoping to top that again this year. It'll be May 10th, and it'll be on the school property and the ponds behind the high school. On the art side of things, Choir took a trip to Disney back in March, where they got to perform and enjoy all of, that Disney had to offer. They said it was a fantastic time, and I really think a lot of them made some really cool memories that will stick with them for way past high school. Along with Choir, Band also went to Disney, and they performed in the Magic Kingdom Parade one morning, and then they also got to enjoy all that Disney had to offer. So I saw a lot of pictures, a lot of posts on Instagram. Everyone had a great time. That was really a cool thing that we were able to do with a little bit of fundraising, so that was a huge success. They also have a concert coming up in May, May 16th, so that should be a good one, since that'll wrap up the concert season. There's also an art showcase going on right now at the Stark County High School Art Exhibition. It's at the Kent Museum of Art, and we have four students that are actually displaying art there, and here are just some pictures of their pieces, so they will be displayed now and for a little bit more time. It really is awesome to showcase all the talent we have here at Marlinton at the county level and the Museum of Art, so that's a very big accomplishment on their part. In sports, we have the boys tennis, which have been really raking up a lot of wins this season, a lot of duel meets, and invites that they're doing great. They're getting win after win. So it's a lot of great momentum that we hope to keep going as we are approaching the postseason. Tomorrow, they play versus West Branch, and then this Friday, they also have what is called the net tournament in Jackson Park. That is a massive tournament that many people from this area go to and compete, so that should be a really fun day for our tennis athletes. Softball, just had a trip to Tennessee last month, where they got to play at a tournament and have a little bit of fun along the way. It went really well. They all had a ton of fun there, so that was a really cool experience that they could have down there and have some team bonding, as well as getting, being undefeated in the tournament down there and doing some really good things. So that was really fun to see. Baseball might have been off to a little bit of a slow start, but they're really starting to pick up some traction now. They've been, I think, three wins in a row at this point in the season. So last night, they had a huge win versus Salem, 14 to 4. Last night, they had a huge win versus Salem, 14-4. And so, I think that with the momentum we have going now, we can really get some good things, even though early on, they might have seemed a little discouraged because of injuries, but now I think they're starting to figure out how to get the vibe going so we can continue to win, even if it's not under the ideal settings for us. The girls' outdoor track has been competing weekly with dual meets and, most recently, the county meet, which was a very big performance on the girls' side, being the team runner-up in the county for Division Two, Three. The boys' outdoor track has also been competing in the past couple of weeks. As far as dual meets go with the league, they have been undefeated so far, and they'll run versus Alliance next Tuesday. They were the champions at the East Canton Invitational, and they were also the team Division Two, Three champions at the county meet, also placing, I believe, fifth in all divisions, which was a pretty good standing for some really big D1 teams. Colin Sernancy also took the county MVP in all divisions for his really impressive performance, where he helped the 4x8 team go to a win. He won the 1,600-meter run, setting a school record, a meet record, and a facility record. He won the 800-meter run, and then he came back and helped the team get fourth in the 4x4, so really outstanding performance by him. So, as always, to keep up to date, follow our social media. We have a lot going on, and our tech department is really fantastic about staying on top of things as they happen. It kind of amazes me. I can be driving home from a meet sometime, and I get home on my phone, and I see it's already posted the results before even I had time to call my family. So, it's pretty impressive what they do. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nash. Very nice update.
Good job.
Okay, we have a few more updates. I talked about this last month, so our next update is going to be a transportation update by our transportation director, Mrs. Sickles. She's very excited right now.
Okay, just a quick update from the transportation department. I'm not sure if any of you have gone past the high school or been to sporting events the last couple of weeks, but if you've noticed buses maneuvering around the parking lot, we've been practicing for the school bus rodeo that they have every year. We've even had North Canton and Salem drivers come over and practice with us. So, we had six drivers participate in the East Regional School Bus Rodeo this past Saturday, and it was held down at Indian Creek School District, which is located down in Mingo Junction, which is just south of Steubenville. It was an interesting trip. So, we competed against several different schools that were down there, and I was proud to say that a team of four of our drivers won second-place team with their combined scores. Last year, they won third-place team. So, the drivers were June Ramey, Debbie Weisel, Lynette Bronski, and Alice McCartney. We also had a driver score second place overall, and our district also won the Spirit Award, second time in a row. We were quite spirited. Our staff is interested in hosting maybe our regional rodeo being held here at Marlington next year. I need to discuss that with Mr. Swisher to see if he'll approve that. We did that back in 2018, and we had a really good outcome, and a lot of people showed up to participate. Onto other things, I wanted to stress the importance of being on a purchasing plan for our buses to replace at least one, if not two, buses occasionally each year. Four of our spare buses are 17-years-old. We've had three of our regular bus route buses, and two of our spares just quit, and they all needed new engines, which is a very expensive repair. We decided to repair two of the newer ones, and that cost is approximately anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 to purchase that engine. And the mechanics are doing that work in-house, otherwise it would have been about $35,000 to ship that work out. We didn't feel it was financially a good decision to put much money into our older buses, so we're not gonna repair those. Three of our buses that are assigned to routes already are already 12-years-old. You know, an aging fleet. I know we've bought several buses in the past years. Thank heavens that we did, because I don't think we'd be able to function without the purchase of those new buses. You know, our buses travel over 2,000 miles a day. You know, we are 91 square feet, covering over three townships. Fuel prices have skyrocketed. I'm sure everybody has hit their pockets this past year. September, it was $3.89 a gallon for us to purchase it through the consortium of the county. October, it went up to $4.25. November, it was up to $5.25. February, it went back down to $3.49. In April this past, we bought 7,500 gallons, and it was $2.91. The fluctuation of that is just really went into our budget for fuel this year. So, the average cost so far this year was roughly about $3.89 a gallon. Last year, we purchased 52,452 gallons. This year so far, we've purchased 34,792. So, I feel that we've conserved gallons, and I believe that's due to the newer buses. They do have a better fuel mileage. And then, on a lighter note, next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, May 6th, the transportation's gonna be hosting an open house job fair for new drivers. We're gonna have that from 10:00 to 1:00. We'll be having different stations for the people to come and go through. People can come and meet some of the drivers. They can sit in the bus, possibly drive it around, depending if there's no cars in the parking lot, or we'll take them for a ride. They can get information, what all's involved in getting their CDL and their S&amp;P endorsements. They can ask drivers questions, learn about the benefits. We can guide them in applying online. They can also apply to sub for other jobs like bus aide, cook, custodians, because we're very short on those subs also. We'll have a food cart there. They can get something to eat, a snow cone, and we'll also have a basket for them to have a chance to win. Next week, the drivers are gonna be handing out flyers to send home to the parents to see if maybe they might be interested, or they know somebody that would be interested. And maybe we can get a few substitute drivers licensed, and we can lead them into a contracted position. And we're going to have several regular drivers coming up for retirement age within the next year or two, and we need good, quality, trained drivers to take their place. And this is our flyer. I know if anybody has noticed, it's on Facebook, and so we're gonna be passing these out to get the word out. Any questions?
Any questions for Sherri?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a technology update for this year with Mr. Davis and Mr. Siders.
Good evening, everyone. Giving you a quick update of the tech department and what we have going on. First, I think Mr. Coe said it best, you gotta surround yourself by great people. Up there is the tech team. I have a privilege of working with all six of those individuals. On the right-hand side, Ben, obviously in the back, and then Max in front of him. Max is right-hand man, does a lot of the break and fix and maintaining the network with Ben. And then, in the back in the middle, we have Erica, Luke, and Joder, which works at Lexington. And then, in front of her is Heidi Miller, which works at the middle school. She serves as a tech assistant and a librarian, so she's dual-rolled as well. And then, the left-hand side, John Myers, which works at Washington, and Sylvia McElroy, which works at the high school. I want you to notice, I did miss one building. So, during the school year, we had our TA at Marlboro. He resigned and went to Alliance to work as the esports. So, we're working one tech down right now, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of covering for that building. So, great group of people that we work with. Some of the things we've been doing, so we upgraded the internet speeds with all the one-to-one devices this year. We went from 500 meg's, we doubled it to go to a gig. It's just with all the student traffic, and it's all the stuff that's going on with society today. We also set up and deployed over 1,800 student devices. So, in the summertime, well, this time of the year, we'll start collecting devices. And Max and Ben work on them over the summertime, make sure they're ready to go for our teachers and students come the school year next year. So, we set about 1,800 of those up. This is a major one, MAPS. It's a big district initiative coming out of the district leadership team. We wanna make sure our kids are moving forward a year's growth in educational growth. We've done over 11,000 sessions of MAPS testing. We got another round coming, so that's gonna go up. So, we're testing MAPS. Every kid in the district, K-12, and the TAs are setting those up in the buildings and running those sessions. So, that's a lot of testing that's going on with just the MAPS alone. Utilizing E-Rate funds, a lot of people don't know that the federal government steps in and helps us out with some of the infrastructure for our technology, and I know Ben's gonna go over it a little bit in the future. But, oop, the E-Rate is a federal fund that supplies 70% of a project, and then the school just only has to pay 30%. So, that's a huge savings when it comes to technology-related stuff that we can utilize in the federal government. Implementing a new HR system, this is working with the payroll and treasurer's department, trying to streamline and go with one system instead of multiple systems to get HR, including the employees we currently have in the district. Converting instructional staff over to new laptops, our laptops that our staff had were 2017s, really showing their age, starting to die when they're trying to give instruction. So, we were converting those throughout the year and trying to work with staff and get that done. Our TAs are migrating those over and doing a great job to minimize the impact on the classroom teacher and get those moved over as quick as possible. So, with that, we're about 90% complete with getting those staff members moved over. We're holding off on a few areas, because those teachers have requested to hold on to their laptops for instructional purpose for kiddos. So, we're working with them and trying to get a timeframe to get those updated, but you know, we're about 90% complete as we speak. Another big project is Smart Find Express, going online and helping out payroll department. This is a collaborative effort between Lisa Manos and the tech department to get all the staff over on an electronic call-off system. I was talking to Lisa, and she said before she would have to spend about a day to run payroll for classified, just the classified staff alone in the district. We've cut that to 30 minutes.
Wow.
That's a huge savings in what she needs to be doing. So, those are the areas. We've got classified done, the administrative staff, secretaries, and tech staff are all 100% complete. The custodial and maintenance staff we're working with, and we're about 50% of the way through that staff and getting them converted over. Some of the big programs, I'm not gonna read down through this whole list, I'll hit the highlights, but the tech staff really is involved in a lot of different programs and maintaining different programs throughout the school. So, it goes from the beginning of the year with online enrollment, getting all those kiddos, getting their EMAs, getting them ready for transportation for the bus drivers so in the event that there's an accident. Ben in charge of the cameras and recording JAMF, which is a deployment system for our devices enabled, allows us to manage them, see where those devices are. We can locate them at any time. You ask us for an individual student, we can tell you where that device is at that moment, when it pings the inner GPS. Few more. Big one I wanna hit on, going down through there, one, the website. We update that on a daily basis securely. A lot of people don't know, we're watching what the kiddos are doing. We can see what they're doing with their iPads. We've had an instance where a kid was searching some self-harm websites. We get notifications. So, it's set up that it automatically goes to the building principal, tech assistant in that building, that they're notified of what's going on. So, I know we can contact appropriate people to entertain them. So, we are watching what the kids are doing.
That includes at home, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that monitoring's happening at home on the school device as well.
Okay.
Some big, what, concerto is the TVs that are going on, so we can run daily announcements just so the kids can see it with the high school kids coming in. I know it's at the middle school as well. Morning video announcements being done, really helps out. It's on YouTube as well. Edging, reaching those kids that have anxiety issues or other medical issues, they can't, don't allow them to come into the school setting, taking care of those. Sophie's doing a great job with DDA and then credit recovery, those kids, that way we don't have them fall behind and not graduate. As a group, we attend monthly meetings with network managers, gradebook manager, and cybersecurity. So, we're going over to the county each month to work with colleagues in the county to go over those following, or those groups. Along with, in the district, between everybody on the tech team, we're all sitting on at least one of these, not multiple committees in the district, the district leadership team building, and then teacher-based. New this year was social media, and I think Nash hit on that, there's sometimes that he'll be on the ride home, and they'll post something on Twitter, Instagram. So, the tech team that are sitting on that committee, which there's additional people as well, not just tech people, but they're doing a great job keeping the community updated on what's going on. Completed project, this is a big one, and I'm gonna let Ben take over, because this is his world.
So, utilizing those E-Rate funds that are available to us, one thing that you approved for us to move forward with last year was a project with Lake Tech Communications to implement Aruba Central as a management platform for our network equipment. What this does is it brings all of our network equipment, our firewall, our switches, our access points, all under what they call one pane of glass management. So, we have one place to go to configure, to diagnose anything that's going on with the network, as well as it allows us to take advantage of some of the new resources with artificial intelligence to analyze what's going on in our network and to try and find problems that we didn't even know were problems yet. And we've been utilizing that quite heavily in the last couple of months. We've run into some issues with our implementation, and the AI engine has pinpointed exactly where the problem was and told us how to fix it in a lot of cases. So, it's been very beneficial, and we were able to utilize the E-Rate funding to take advantage of that.
And some of the big upcoming projects we're working on, we're working on getting rid of about seven different programs to go to one parent communication app. That's a big, big, big thing we're working on. Not only will it, it'll streamline it, but it's also making it that it's one stop shop. So, from coaches to parents to teachers, administrators, it's been a daunting task to get it going, but you know, we're almost there. And then, Strategic Solutions, again, working with Mr. Foss and the treasurer's office to try to, again, go to one system. They moved all the finances over to Strategic Solutions, so we wanna try to get there as well. So, everything talks to each other. That way, we're not making redundant entries, especially when we're hiring somebody, so it's not the painstaking. It's, we've got to kind of narrow it down. Summer duties, so that's coming. We gotta collect all those 1,800 devices back that we handed out in the fall, clean, inspect the inventory, and make sure we've got them, make sure they're in working order. Go around to each classroom, make sure all the projectors are functioning. If there's a TV in there, making sure it functions. Anybody that changes buildings, maybe just changing the classroom, making sure the phones or network connections are changed to that room, supporting quite a few staff and students in summer school. So, we're already starting to earmark those kids that are gonna need their devices so they don't fall behind. And that's it. Any questions for us?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so, the next item on the agenda, before I give my report, is just every year, we have to give a, just to let you guys, at a board meeting, we had to put up the annual we have to give a, just to let you guys at a board meeting, we had to put up the annual report, go ahead, Ben, of compliance with food and beverage standards. So this is just something we do annually. We've got to let ODE know that we do it. It's so you can read that in front of you. It's just basically let us know that Marlington Local Schools has adopted and enforces of the nutrition standards based on Ohio Rice Code. Okay, so this does not change. They just, it is a requirement from the food service side that we make sure that that is known. Any questions about that?
Yeah.
A lot of different reports. April, May are two of our, probably our busiest months of the year when, you know, it comes to getting in, closing out for the school year here. So as usual, this is my April report. Sam Dan Swisher, I'm the superintendent. So we're going to go ahead and, you know, as we keep going with, you know, talking about reasons to celebrate and where we're at right now and where we're moving forward. Talking about reasons to celebrate. So it's been about four or five weeks. So last, we did just celebrate last night at the Kent State University Conference Center at Kent Stark, our Marlington Local School District. It was countywide, but so every, there's twenty different teachers that were honored last night. Heather Craig was our honoree this year as the Marlington Local School Teacher of the Year. She is a fifth grade math and science teacher, and she's been with us about fourteen years. We had a chance last night to have dinner, her family, and that came up, and she was honored last night. We also got a chance to honor our Rookie of the Year. Those are somebody that's been here for less than, you know, teaching less than three years. So our Marlington Local School District Rookie of the Year is Alex McDaniel. He's a math teacher here at the high school. He's also part, he also coaches our soccer, helps coach with Chicago. Alex is also a Marlington grad. So we are excited to get him back. So he's been just a wonderful addition here to our high school. So those are just, both those happened last night, so they were excited. It was a very nice evening that we had together last, yesterday. Next, we have, it was probably two weeks ago, we had the Ohio School Board Association ten-year board recognition. So they have our veteran board members. So we had a chance to travel up to Wayne County Career Center. We actually, that's where she talked about the in-service that we had, got to hear Mr. Locke and some other speakers. We got to have dinner, so, and then we got to watch Mrs. Kathy Krupko get honored as a ten-year board member, which is quite an honor. So, you know, Mrs. Humphries came with us, Mr. Ryan and myself joined that evening. So we got a, I took a quick snapshot of Kathy. I'm not sure if she knew I was taking the picture, so, but we do want to congratulate Kathy for ten years on the board, which is, you know, that dedication and giving to us great. So we appreciate all our board members, but ten years is great. So thank you, Kath.
Good job.
April tenth, when we came back from spring break, the kids had another day, but we had a professional development day. So typically on those PD days, you know, we design those for data-related purposes within the confines of their grade level or grade bands or particular subject level. So I kind of, we kind of had a discussion, Mrs. Kaylee and myself, Mr. Ravinech, about the morning, and some things that we needed to review. So I just kind of highlighted a few things to review. So on the left, we had Mr. Tyler Smith from Stark County Spark. He came in, did cybersecurity. He kind of just reviewed the staff, the importance, because from a cybersecurity aspect, it's not banks is not the number one thing hackers hack, it's education. Okay, that's number one in the world. So if a hacker is looking to continue to hack, it comes education. So that's why we have to be very careful with how we operate within the confines of what we do. So he reviewed that. So it was good for our staff to hear that. And then we kind of switched. So we had half, we had the sixth through twelfth staff kind of hear that, while our elementary staff, for the first half, they got the, or vice versa, so it was kind of, we did two sessions for an hour. We talked about our crisis plan. So we're going to be reviewing that a little bit more in June from a board aspect, but our administrative staff and our teaching staff have been kind of updating the fact that we do have a crisis plan in place. Okay, so that, what that means is basically when something would happen in the district at any level, we have a very thorough plan. So if somebody would be in an accident, we had somebody that would pass away from a student to a staff member, you know, obviously there are certain protocols that we need to follow, and it's a very in-depth plan based on data, you know, coming in from the professionals above us. So we spent time, if I was superintendents, for months kind of reviewing that, kind of coming up with what that plan should look like. I'll be honest with you, the plan is probably eighty-six pages, but we just reviewed what's probably the most pertinent parts of that plan, and that's not just Marlington. Every school district in Stark County has that plan, it's just adapted to fit the way the district is. So they kind of got an update, so each, all the teachers on that day. So that was, it was a nice morning. They got to hear a little update from me about where we were at. We sent them the lunch. They got then go back with, to their buildings and kind of do work on the part that's, you know, most meaningful to them, which is the data part, and then obviously some time for themselves to get, you know, prepare for coming back for the kids. Nash did not talk about the High School Musical, I don't think, so I think I got him. Usually catches me. So we did change our board meeting last month for the musical, so I just wanted, you know, talk about Annie. Our kids were just amazing. So if you had a chance to go see the musical on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, and Sunday, I think they're in four days.
Four days.
They're in four days. We had just an excellent turnout. The kids were amazing. I can't say enough, but it was definitely worth your time. So if you get a chance, if you didn't, I don't know what next year's musical is going to be, but if you get a chance, please come out. It was just an amazing program. So a couple more pictures. Okay, moving on to the now. I'm not going to talk about testing. Nash beat me that once. We swapped from that one, so we're good. So we are in the heat of testing, so that's all I'll say. I did, we did talk about, we were talking about projects. So this, we're kind of getting into it. So there was, the question came up when we were approving projects. We were talking about, you know, what it really would cost to abate, our major building's Lexington for abatement. We do have asbestos probably in every building, but the major building is Lexington. So I promised to take a look at that on two different kind of fronts there to see what it would take to get that done. So I looked at it, we kind of got with the environmental support network, and Bill Racine came back and kind of said, listen, the size of the abatement that needed to be done, he would recommend in four phases, so four years, four summers. So in general, it's basically anywhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars per session. So if we were to abate Lexington as a whole over the course of four years, you're looking at somewhere in the range of about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to abate. Either way, no matter what, that would have to be done at some point in time. We were fully aware of this. We knew in the past that we had a rough estimate of four hundred some thousand dollars for abatement, so we figured over the course of that, that was probably somewhere in the range of five to seven years ago. I would assume that that rise, when you're saying five hundred and twenty thousand, is probably just due to the fact it's just sheer inflation. So that's something that I think as a board, we probably, we, obviously, we're not attacking that this summer. We've kind of went through what our plans are, and we're okay right now, but it is something that I want to keep on our radar and have a discussion about it moving forward. We also know that that doesn't complete the project. If you abate anything, it just leaves open spaces. So with Lexington being abated, you just can't have open ceiling spaces, so we had to talk about putting in drop ceiling. You can't just go to Lowe's and buy a drop ceiling, it has to be very specific type of grade of drop ceiling you put in, so we did have that estimate come out, just for our purposes and to get an idea, because that was the question. So you're looking at probably in a range of a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty five thousand dollars just to put in a drop ceiling with the correct graded material.
Is that per year or overall?
That's overall.
So total project?
Total project. So that wouldn't be just per each individual section, that would be the total project. I didn't ask for a breakdown because I couldn't, I didn't cross, I didn't give them and say, hey, if you did this section, you know, in four phases, what each phase would be, you know, we'll cross that bridge if we need to, but I didn't want to follow up with that. We were looking at what the, you know, kind of a cost was in general right now in today's cost, what it would be to abate or put in a drop ceiling right now. Any questions about that?
Lexington's just, we're focused on that because that's the biggest project.
That's the biggest project. I mean, and Bill Racine, we said we do have, we have drop ceilings in our other buildings right now, so it's kind of a protection, you know, not that it was intentional or unintentional how it works out, you know, so as things that we get checked, we still would abate them as they come, or we have to encapsulate them, so if it's a small project. So say we notice something, a crack or whatever, so we do call them in, then we have cardinal come in and they encapsulate. So not necessarily everything has to be abated, so we have different options, but that was the, I mean, we had that conversation this year about, you know, what it would cost to do a project that size. So I just wanted to kind of bring the hard figures out tonight, where we're at on that. Any questions about that? Okay. I put solar project up here only because I update the board on different things, and this just happened last week. So for those of you that are aware, there's a potential of a solar project that would happen in Washington Township, and they did do, I'd say, within this year, or maybe it was late, maybe it was last year, it's hard to remember, they kind of did a public meeting at Washington Elementary. So they basically, Samsung execs and their consultants came back out, reached out to me and said, hey, would you mind if I came in? We gave you kind of an update on the solar project, where they're at, where it's heading, and so forth. So we had a meeting with them. I invited Karen in to come into the meeting. So we sat down with the Samsung execs and their consultants, and they just kind of give a quick update. So I'm just going to kind of give a very broad scope of that, because what that could potentially mean to the district, because we always look at what's coming out there in the future. So as of right now, they're still basically filling out the application process. They kind of have the bulk of the landowners on board where they would feel the project would go. They're still looking to expand it a little bit larger, so they're still looking with, talking to a couple landowners. Obviously, my question was, what does that mean? Because I'm not a solar expert by any stretch. They said basically their project is they want to do a hundred and fifty megawatt project. That's what, that's what they call it. So the goal is to have a hundred and fifty megawatt solar project. So to make that work, though, they have to submit to the Ohio Power Site Board. So that's their face. So they're about eighty percent ready to get ready to submit to the Ohio Power Site Board, so they said probably within the next two months. I would say also within the next two months, they're probably going to do what they call PIM, which is another public information meeting. So they'll probably reach back out and say, hey, can we use Washington Elementary again to do another public information meeting, because they have a little bit more concrete evidence of exactly where the solar farm would go, how it might affect people, or so forth down the line. They basically said, once the Ohio Power Site Board approves it, most projects go through. Now, there is another layer of approval that has to happen, but that's just their general, you know, twenty thousand-foot view, so which was fine. So obviously, our question was real simple. I mean, how does this affect Marlington Local Schools? Okay? What does this mean for Marlington Local Schools is really what we're at, because that's the business we're in. And so they gave us really, it's like two options here, so you can, and this isn't going to come down to the board making this recommendation, it's going to come down to Stark County Commissioners making an approval or not. So there's really, there's two options. Once this project is complete, if the project gets completed, let me catch that, if the project happens and gets approved. If it's a hundred and fifty megawatt power project, what that means for the district, the township, and the county is they have, they can either go through what they call a pilot program. So a pilot program is a guaranteed seven thousand dollars per megawatt. So you take seven thousand, multiply it times a hundred and fifty, you're talking about a little over a million dollars, and then you got it, and that would get sent to the tax commissioner, say Alan Harrell would break it down on our millage and basically say, how much money would you get? So, you know, you could roughly say that would bring into Marlington, because obviously Washington Township would get money out of that, Stark County would get money out of that. So, you know, we had a rough estimate of maybe between four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars yearly for Marlington Local Schools. And with doing the pilot, it's a guaranteed thirty to forty years, that money. It's not based on depreciation of the project or how much energy brings in. That's option one. The bonus to the pilot, because I brought up the fact that when Nexus came here, they made a statement, as in the, it's, the valuation of Nexus is one point two billion dollars. So the state of Ohio or the education thinks that we have a one point two billion dollar home is a layman's way to say it's sitting in our property. So we're obviously losing state funding, as we know this sits in contentious battle right now, so we're really losing money on two fronts. We're not getting the money that we should get from Nexus, and we're also losing money on the state side and the foundations. They said the benefit of the pilot is that does not affect any valuation at all. It basically, it's like it doesn't exist. So I kind of questioned that. Of course, you know, you're skeptical. I said, I'd like to hear it from Aaron Roush in writing. Aaron Roush is the ODE guru. Guess what? Aaron Roush emails me the next day and says, a hundred percent, I have it in writing. Now, we don't control the pilot. The tax, the Stark County Commissioners do, so our commissioners have to do it. But there's a bonus. If the commissioners do it, they also get an extra two thousand per kilowatt. So they get nine thousand, and that goes directly to the Stark County. So there's incentive for that to happen. You know, they said, obviously, you can go the other route, which would be very similar to Nexus. Basically, you would have an evaluation, it would affect our state foundation money. At the same time, yes, we may receive more money upfront from a hundred and fifty megawatt power, but at the same time, as in any solar grid, it's going to depreciate over time. So the even-out process based on their data is it's worth going the pilot. And that's really a twenty thousand-foot view in layman's terms. That was the extent of the conversation we had with them, because really, everything still sits with they have to submit to the power, the Ohio Power Site Board. So outside of that, I just thought that was an interesting conversation. So I think our final question was if and when this would happen, when would Marlington see, possibly see the money, or when would this be built? They said, in a perfect world, like everything went through with no issues on the permit side and the power site committee, and then it goes to another, a group for approval. They said maybe late two thousand twenty-six, probably two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight. You know, it's probably be more of a realistic thing. So that's still not that far off. That still falls in our five-year forecast range. We can't forecast that, but I mean, it's nice to know. So we'll see how this pans out in the next few months, and hopefully within the next year, we'll have a better idea. But I thought that was worth updating the board and letting you know that they reached out to us. I had no idea anything about it. That was Samsung that reached out. So if you have any more questions, see me. I do have their cards, so if you want to have any follow-up with that, that's everything I have on that end of it. Questions on that?
Did they mention with the pilot program, what period of time that amount would be?
Thirty to forty, thirty, forty years. They said almost everybody that they've done any solar project anywhere in the United States, or at least even in Ohio, the pilot program is where the commissioners have gone. It's almost a no-brainer, but it doesn't guarantee that that's what our commissioners, again, we can recommend to our commissioners, we can go see them, but that's where it's Okay, just a side note, I put Career Expo up there. This was something that I wanted to happen, and it was a conversation, and Mrs. Kaylee wanted it to happen, our career tech group wanted it to happen, so basically, we're a little late, which is okay. It's not, actually not bad timing. So we have coming up here, hopefully it'll open up. Maybe, yeah. So May eleventh, we have a Career Expo, so eleven AM to two PM for students, three to five PM for the community. It's here, it's for companies to come in, gives students and/or the community that's looking to enhance their job skills or get a job, to come in and talk to these companies and possibly move forward. So right now, we have thirty-two companies signed up, our business is coming on May eleventh. So that's pretty amazing. So, and we're going, we plan on expanding on this next year to do it a little bit earlier and add a few more, I guess, for some of our companies, I would prefer them to speak to our students and kind of give them an idea, because we have some companies, I'll use an example, Mack Trailer. You know, you hear Mack Trailer, you think welding, so sometimes kids go, I don't want any interest because that's all they do is hire welders. So that's not really accurate. If he's got fifteen hundred employees, I would say at least almost five hundred of them are not welders. He has many other job opportunities. Same with Morgan Engineering, same with Scott Robertson's at Robertson Seizing Cooling, same with SES, same with Winkle, and many others. So we kind of want to get to the point of bringing in our, some of our business people to kind of let them know what they could do, so that way they're, they feel maybe a little more confident to go to a table and go out and get some type of experience in that field, which could end up turning into something very lucrative for them down the Oh, boy, Ben, hold on. All right. Two more. Wind damage. So we've had two wind storms in the last six So we've had two windstorms in the last six weeks. Those have been just fun. We've had a little bit, little bit of a mess. Our district from, from actually electricity held up great, but our pine trees did not and our roofs. So this is out of Washington Elementary. We had a few pine trees go down in the first windstorm. It did affect, it did not get anywhere near a building. It did affect a little bit on the kindergarten playground. It did affect some fencing on the playground and a couple trees out there as you can see. We were able to get that cleaned up. That first windstorm, that happened on a Saturday. I think it was Sunday morning. Mrs. Krupko called me bright and early about 8:00 AM. It's a, heading into-
I called you Saturday.
Saturday, I'm sorry. It's happened Saturday morning. She called me early. She was the first and said, hey, we got some trees down. I think by Sunday at 5 o'clock, we had those trees gone. I really want to thank Mike, Mike's Tree Service, Mr. Castellucci. I mean, he jumped right on it for us, right out there. You know, you make a phone call and he was, he was joining on the spot to help us out because we obviously can't have kindergartners or cars pulling in on that end of it. So we also, that's a little bit of a shingle damage on our, I'm going to, I call it Sherry's House now. He's called the White House, not Sherry's House. That's where we're at. So we call it, but our maintenance staff was able to take care of that, Alan Rayo. Some more pictures of the trees. Now, I, I put the bus garage at Washington because it's a flat roof, but we, it did pull up. So we are getting that fixed. That's something they can't do. Really can't see that, but it's there. A little bit, we had some dugouts, some issues there, dugouts from the wind that were getting addressed. We had the, some of the fencing around the tennis courts also took a beating there. So I just want to give you, so we kind of got estimates on the fencing. We had, the Castelluccis took care of some other trees that came down. They submitted, Mr. Foss has reached out to our liability insurance Darla. So we are looking at, we knew, we just found out today kind of where we're at with that. So we'll be able to submit a good portion of this for in our insurance. We picked up on that end of it. Any questions on the wind damage? Finally, I was asked to just to, just to give a quick safety update and I think it's in your guys' folder too. You know, we do a lot of different things for safety. So we do nine rapid dismissals, or I guess you would call them fire drills per year. You only need to do six if a building has smoke detectors or sprinklers. We do not have smoke detectors or sprinklers. So we do nine. Sometimes the question goes, why do you guys do safety drills all the time? Well, by law, and then there, there's certain reasons we have to follow drill format based on the age of the buildings, which isn't a big deal. It's just that way it keeps things fresh for the student's mind. One must be held within during the first 10 days. We obviously do four tornado drills per year, one per month from April to June. We do three functional drills per year. They're conducted with students and law enforcement. Those are what we call pretty much lockdown drills. We do one theoretical drill per year, per year. Student participation is optional. As far as I know in our theoreticals, we have not had students participate. We typically do those in PD days. So we're talking about theoretical. These are state mandates we're talking about. This year, we did tabletop exercises with the Sheriff's Department, Stark County, Marlboro PD, could be that comes in and basically we have, we break our staff into groups and we go through what would happen in this scenario. What do you do? We answer questions. You know, another theoretical would be actually what we do is a full-blown lockdown, what it's like. What does that feel like? What would you do? You know, and unfortunately, some of this is very intense and hard on staff, but at the same time, this is in a real-world situation, that's what it's going to be like. So we do, we do practice those. So I did put in there kind of the, just the state far emotional required drills for you guys to take a look at. And then I, and then Mr. Evanich was kindly enough to give us a brief update on the tornado drills, fire drills, lockdown and a little bit of reflection. Since he got bequeathed the safety coordinator when I got moved to superintendent. So he did a, I had him take care of that on that end. Any questions about safety? All right, moving forward. Next month, obviously, it's going to be, next month's a big, big meeting. We're at, we're going to talk about folk scholarships. All right, so we're going to have, be given out, the board's going to be giving out the folk scholarship next month, which we got, I think, 20? 20. That will be honoring next board meeting, giving out money. So they'll be very excited. We're going to talk about, we're, I'll give you a brief update on where I'm heading for staffing and purchase services because obviously that's the five-year forecast meeting. We're going to talk about recognition of our 20 years of service. Our staff member's been here for 20 years and obviously we have a retirement celebration. We're going to do something a little different for our retirees this year. So that'll be next month. So if you have any questions for me as we close out here, move on to the next part of the board meeting. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Public participation. Did anyone sign up?
No.
Thank you. Old business.
Before we go into old business, I did have one more item. You guys did receive a, the board itself and the administration did get a thank you card. So obviously, we, we did lose a beloved staff member, Marion Doyle, one of our custodians. The board did give a beautiful birdbath floor, flower arrangement. So they put Marlington Administration of Team, says, thank you for the beautiful birdbath flower arrangement. It was very thoughtful. Marion truly loved the Marlington community. She was blessed to have you all. And that came from her husband Ron and then obviously Rhonda, Robyn and Rose. So they did send that thank you and I let you guys know. I appreciate that. Okay, old business. So we have under old business, this will be our second vote. So this is our normal twice a year. We've met with Neolas. This is the recommend the motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
I asked him.
There was no public participation?
Yeah. Bob said no.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
Okay, back then. Recommend the motion to approve the following resolutions from Page 41, number two, January 2023 as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Okay, on the new business, the first one is the recommendation, recommendation, recommend the motion to approve the following resolution as shown in Exhibit A, B.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is asking the board to pass the resolution for, this is a mass tort similar to the jewel that you guys did a few years ago and it took the, there's no cost to the board. We're just asking to participate. This is about social media companies. Very similar to the fact that they've just kind of, this will give the law form of the France group an opportunity to, for Marlington to join in a mass tort claim, to kind of go at the social media companies that have kind of spearheaded, you know, maybe the wrong propaganda years ago to where they're at now.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
We've, second, recommend the motion to approve the following out-of-state field trip as shown in Exhibit C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It literally is a race. It's the track meet.
It's, it's the track meet?
We're just doing this in advance. If our boys or girls in the Marlington track team happen to make it, they would go to Philadelphia, PA for the New Balance Outdoor National Meet, which would happen actually in June 14th when school's out. And I, we were just being cautiously optimistic.
Nice. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Next, recommend the motion to approve the student handbook, athletic handbook and Duke's digital handbook for the 2022, 2023 school year, basically as shown in Exhibit D through F.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I can tell you the only change in the handbook was personnel was updated.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Always a good one here. Recommend the motion to approve the 2023 graduation of the following students listed as shown in Exhibit G.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I checked and I said, we're on the list.
We're on the list.
Next item, recommend the motion to approve school fees for the 2023, 2024 school year as seen in Exhibit H.
So moved.
Second.
For your information, as you have the school fees in front of you, from last year to this year, there are a few changes. So our K8 fees are now $35. Last year, they were 30. Okay? Down below that at World Language, last year it was a total for $17 for French I. Now we have dropped it to French I to $10. And obviously, if you're at French II, it's only $10 or French III, it's $10 instead of a, the flat French I for that. If you turn over, all the way in the back under, I think last year we had physical education. We no longer are requiring a fee for PE, so we just took it off. That's all the changes.
That parking permit, wasn't that 50 bucks at one time?
It was at one time, but we did drop that a few years ago to 20.
And 50 for pay to play is the same as we were before.
That, that has been for years. That is not-
That's what I thought.
That has not changed.
I think this 2008 is when it was implemented.
Are we still offering summer school PE?
No. If they do, it's online.
Got it.
Through Edgenuity.
Wow, okay.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Next is our annual contract with the ESC. Sorry, I recommend the motion to approve the following contract for fiscal year 2024 as seen in Exhibit I.
So moved.
Second.
Apologize, I jumped ahead. This is our annual contract for the ESC. The difference between last year and this year is 9,034 and 9 cents is the difference between last year and this year, more.
I don't suppose it was less.
It is not.
Dan, can you highlight some of the, some of the services we get?
Yeah, and, and Bob can chime in too. So obviously, it's, it's pretty collaborative with the ESC. So obviously, we do get preschool services. You know, a portion of that money will go, goes to preschool. Legal, we get legal. Now, we obviously use different legal firms based on the scenarios that are placed in front of us, but you know, for a bulk of day-to-day legal questions, we use the ESC and that's just built into that. So we don't get billed at all for any legal services when we just use the ESC legal. Obviously, part of being in the, the collaboration with them comes with all the, now, we obviously get billed separately for this, but that's your OT and your PT. I mean, we're not a big district, so we can't hire our own occupational therapist, our own physical therapist, some of our speech and language people. I mean, we're still paying in addition on top of this fee for it, but we won't have to go out and search for it. Obviously, then when it comes to collaboration with the tech side, the Spark, you know, and that, so they, they come to monthly meetings. Our superintendents have monthly meetings. Renee goes to curriculum, they have a curriculum monthly meeting, they have an instructional leaders monthly meeting. They have title meetings. They have all the different teachers that we send to for lead teacher meetings is all part of the collaboration in that.
Trainings, technical assistance. I'm going to training tomorrow.
You know, finances, it's, it's, it's quite an amazing deal when you really put it in perspective, if you really had to farm out even just, you know, we take for granted picking up the phone and calling somebody, what that might cost. You know, and the answers you get. So it's, that's good.
Thanks.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Number seven, recommend the, the motion to approve the following resolution with LJ Masonry for the brick remediation work at Marlboro Elementary as shown in Exhibit J.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the reason why this, this, this was not put on last month was we talked about what it would cost or do. This is the Jim Walt Marlboro. We wanted to get that kind of taken care of. We talked about possibly, would it be better just to cover it with, like, I guess, I don't want to say siding because that's the improper word. It's very layman's way to put it. We want to kind of get an estimate out there. So basically, what, what we got back was to put on vertical metal wall panels, new coping metal and metal hat, hat channels was basically 100 to 125,000 dollars. They also said, just on a side note, all masonry work, including the removal and replacement of the linnels must be completed prior to installation of the system. So you still have to pay a portion of what we were going to do anyway. So they just kind of gave us feedback. They gave us an idea. So I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape with the quotes we got and I didn't want to let that one pass. I was the only one we held on, but we did agree as a board, we were going to move forward with it. So I wanted to put that on there after I got that. I felt that that's a prudent move that we were doing this way.
This is primarily for the west side of the building, right?
Yes. West.
Jim?
Yes, Jim Walt. Yep.
Now, I got a question. On the original quote, they had the additional repair of the upper north corner of the west wall. Are we moving forward with that?
That's in there. That's in there. It's in with this.
That's in there?
Yeah, it's just part of her overall budgetary process. It's going to be done.
Okay.
Yeah. I did ask and call her. I asked about that.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, the next one's not a recommend, it's not a motion to recommend, but it is, we talked about it, you heard them talk about E-rate, so I just, if, I wanted to give you an idea, if you have any questions for Ben about, you know, if he wanted to give anything on the E-rate update for this year.
Yeah, so we, as Eric said, E-rate for Marlington funds our connectivity at about a 70% level. And there's two different portions of that funding, a Category 1 and a Category 2. The way I look at it is Category 1 funding brings connectivity into the building, and the Spark contract that you have in front of you there for internet service is that Category 1 service. So that gets connectivity to the building. And then, Category 2 is a budget that is made available to us for funding internal connections, so distributing that internet connectivity throughout the building. In the past, we've utilized that funding for installing new switching equipment, new access points. That was a huge program that we just went through back in 2020. The Aruba Central setup that we went through this year was funded under a Category 2 funding, and the quote you have there from Lake Tech for some additional access points is also a Category 2 item. What those are for this year is some additional access points just to fill in some holes that we've identified. As I said, the AI was identifying problems that we didn't even know we had in some areas of the buildings, so we've added some access points there to fill in some holes. And just keep moving forward to the Category 2 budget is on a five-year cycle, so fiscal year '21 through '25 is where we're at right now. So we're kind of in the middle of that, just doing some little things. But we'll be identifying here if we need to do any major projects in the next two years before that cycle renews again. So, any questions?
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, a few more here in new business. Recommend the motion to approve the following foreign exchange students. I'm not going to butcher their names there. For the 2023-2024 school years, you can see those in Exhibit M.
So moved.
I vote that Dan says their names. Sounds fair.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, next. Recommend the motion to approve the Stark County Health Department contract as shown in Exhibit N. Annual also for that. So you want to compare last apples to apples. We look from last year to this year. Generally, we were basically at a $40 per hour rate for a nurse. They moved it to 43 an hour. So what's that come out to for us? Last year, we were charged for nursing services as a whole for a year, $54,600. This year's contract will be $58,695, so that we're basically a difference of an additional, this year be $4,095. We do have two nurses, but it's equivalent to one. So we have two part-time nurses that make one full-time nurse, so we can pay for one.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Before we move on the Treasurers agenda, I'd like to add a, I'd like to add one more motion, if that's allowed, based on votes. I would, you know, would like to bring up the motion, and I, we didn't do this in addition correction because I did not want Bill Co. to know we were naming the field after him.
Right.
So I did speak with you about this. So I would like to recommend the motion to name the Marlington softball field the Bill Co. Field.
So moved.
Right behind you, right behind you.
Hey, just as a matter of procedure, would you mind, first motion be to add that to the agenda?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
amend the agenda, and then we'll have the resolution.
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda to add something new business?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, call the roll on that.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, next then, I would like to make a motion to name Marlington's softball field to be renamed Bill Co. Field.
So moved.
Second.
Five of us motioned that.
Take my pick, I guess.
Anybody, just who you want.
All right.
Okay, and call the roll.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Thank you. Treasurers agenda. You're on, Bob.
Okay, I hope the video was working. That'll help me sort that out for minutes. All right, first recommendation from the Treasurer is that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 15 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Would like to recommend that the Marlington Local Board of Education approve the financial reports for the period ending March 31, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just, are there any highlights you have?
No, not from the reports per se. I do have a couple of things just to update you on as far as what's been going on. But from the financial reports, no, other than to say, I guess one thing is more procedural with the department, with the office, was just that the reconciliation went a little bit better this month. So I was pleased about that. You know, we're trying to do some things to try to make, make the process cleaner, not miss things, just be more careful, find more ways to have cross checks. I think I mentioned it in prior meetings, but the way the health insurance works was problematic. I compliment Lisa Manos in particular. She's come up with a lot of ways to make sure that that, those amounts get to the GL more accurately or less likely to have problems. So the team's doing a real good job, but we are looking for ways to improve efficiency. Eric Seider's, what he mentioned about like strategic solutions and looking to do some HR onboarding and use their software in-house. He, I don't think he mentioned it, but the big takeaway for our office is going to be not just efficiency, but just kind of the natural, better processes that come from getting rid of paper. There is a lot that we do that's paper and just not the quickest way to handle things. It hurts the payroll process especially, and now HR is so integrated into payroll, it has a certain problems that will be remedied by this once we get it onboard. So looking forward to do that. Bob, can I ask a question real quick? Why are there two separate data sets with two totals? For the dispersment summary report? Yeah. That's a heading thing that needs change. The first report you see, I think it's probably the fourth, third or fourth column over, it'll say reconciled. Date. You see that? The ones that aren't reconciled then are the second set. Yeah, so the first, the first set, it's really kind of like a different filter on the same report. The first one shows all the checks that cleared for the month. The second one are those that are outstanding currently, say, it says outstanding. On that second set, they need to update the start date too, just 1-1-2,000. It should be 3-1-23, I think. No, because it's really picking up any that are outstanding through history. Okay. Kind of like as far back as we can go. So. Okay. Which is, actually, that's even a little bit of progress there too. I know, I mentioned Lisa Manos doing a great job. That was one thing she did not so long ago too, was to clean up some of the ones that were hanging out there forever and a day, you know, track down people. Why wasn't, you know, do you still have the check? Why didn't you deposit it? Reissued a couple to replace lost ones.
Clean audit report too.
Good. That's, yeah. The other two kind of updates, that's probably a more important one, is the audit report is completed. So that is available on the Outer States website publicly. I considered printing off copies for you, but since it's over 90 pages long, I thought, I'll just let you know it's on the Outer States website. Everyone needs a copy, there is one available in my office, and we can make that, copy those for you. So you guys just started recently doing this, where it was separate? Because I remember them all being intermixed, you know, the reconciled and... Oh. You know what? I don't know what we did before I came. I'm just saying, on previous reports, I could have swore I remember seeing some that were, you know, I don't remember there being two sets, but it could just be me. And frankly, if you got... No, I was just wondering if it was something we changed. If you'd like to see it different too, let me know, because I mean, there's a couple ways to do this too. It could be just all checks and then show their status, one report. I know we used that outstanding number for our cash reconciliation. I like it like this. So that's why, probably why we gravitated towards that.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to do what's workable for you and your office.
Thank you, but appreciate that.
Let's vote on this, right?
I'm good with that. Okay.
Call the roll.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
The next item is to also, ours to recommend board approve the donations.
So moved.
Second.
And I will read those momentarily.
I can read it for you if you want.
Thank you, Dan.
You have a anonymous donor to Washington Elementary for the amount of $150. You have PICS bricks to Washington Elementary and $100. Both these are for Raffle prizes donation for the steam lab. We have plus-plus to Washington Elementary for Raffle prizes donation for the steam lab, and that was $175. And Southwest Ohio Instructional Technology Association for $150 to Washington Elementary. This is also for Raffle prizes donation for the steam lab. How was I going to try to say it?
Appreciate those donations, for sure. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
The next item is to approve, or to recommend the board approve, the revenue and budget revisions as presented in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
One note about that I wanted to share too is, you'll notice on there, the Food Service Fund Cafeteria 006, fairly significant increase. Built into that is basically, you know, think of inflation, how that's affected us. There essentially wasn't quite enough budget for food supplies for the year. So that amount that you see there is based on an estimate of $47,000 needed per month for April and May, and then, as things taper off, another $15,000 for June. And I also have $30,000 in there for a new combi oven, they call it, that has essentially died and needs more repairs than it's worth, so.
Just so you know, we have, our food is $600,000 ahead, so we're just moving money. We only budgeted, you know, the previous treasurer budgeted for the year. This is our shortfall, but we're not really just taking money out of that Food Service Fund and putting it into this, did our budget for the year. So this is not coming, this isn't really affecting the general fund by any stretch.
Yeah, it doesn't affect the forecast, and that's a very pertinent point too, Dan. It's just that there's plenty of money right now in our cafeteria fund, which is really a blessing. There are districts out there that have to help support their cafeteria from the general fund. So it's being run well.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Just one point too, we might want to handle it first thing, but as we get into personnel, that addition that we had to add Jan Luke as a sub at the beginning, I think the way we handled that was, that vote was really to add that to the agenda, but we didn't get that onto those following pages. So if, maybe as the first personnel item, if you all wouldn't mind taking a roll call on that, motion, second roll call to do that item number five, adding Jan Luke as a sub, that would probably be good for my record.
Should we do the motion in a second to do that?
Yes. So like, what we did was to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Thanks. All right, so Kathy. Okay, thank you.
Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Hey, Bob, one more thing for, and this, I'd like to set up after the meeting tonight, set up a meeting for Finance Committee to go over the five-year budget, so if we can get together.
Perfect. That was the one update I didn't get to, and I kind of missed me there. I'll give it to you now briefly, was that I met twice with Ryan from Frontline to work on the forecast, the most recently was this morning, to go over that and start, start to work on that. And so that is, we're in that process. As you all probably know, it's due to the state by May 31. So it will need to be addressed. It'll be on the agenda at the next board meeting. So my intention is to meet with Mr. Swisher late this week, hopefully, and then I would approximately a week from now or next week sometime, I'd hope to be ready that we can meet with the Finance Committee.
Perfect.
To review that as well, too.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, on the personnel, I would, if you guys are good, I would, I'm going to consent to personnel. Kind of given updates I go through.
Yes.
All right, so we do have a classified resignation. We have two, just so you know. So we have Mrs. Lepley, Mrs. Niemann. So we, both our secretaries at Marlboro have resigned effective at the end of the school year. We have some certified staff hires, so we have one, and that's just, Mara Knox becoming an intervention specialist, that is not a new position. Mara's been working for us all year. She's been as a sub. She's got her licensure, able to make her a teacher, which is where she would have been. Classified sub hires, or staff hires there. We just got Tasha Kostoff, that's the athletic secretary. That's not a new hire. She's replacing Mackenzie Showalter. We have Kristen Dixon as a recess monitor. She's actually replacing Lindsay Sickles. Lindsay Sickles is going to become a parapro because she's replacing Jill Ginther, because Jill Ginther left and became an FSS. So all of those are just basically movements within the system. We have our supplemental list there for you. You can take a look. We're target those. I'm trying to get those done as early as possible, so that most of those wrapped up by next board meeting. We also have our typical migrant hires for the summer. You'll see the list there attached, if you want to take a look at the migrant hires for the summer. We have a few student summer hires. This will probably continue in the next month. You know, we always try to employ a few of our students to help out support through the summer. Steam camp, we have steam camp, obviously, the first week after school. We have hires for that. That's completely funded through the steam camp itself, you know, as they pay their registration fees for camp. We have a non-traditional sub hire, okay? We have a summer custodian hire, one. And we have a classified staff transfer. We just have a cook going from a three-hour to a four-hour. We have a, we had a three-hour, a four-hour cook resign. We have not replaced that, so this is an internal going from a three to a four, and then we're going to, we are looking to currently replace then the three-hour at some point in time, when that happens.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And just so you know, Beck to the Jan Luke, she would fall under a classified, or she would fall under a certified staff hire as a sub. Just so you know, she's a sub.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Finally, announcements. I've kind of asked the administrative team to kind of get some, hit some big targets here coming up, because May's busy. End of April, May's busy. So kind of gives you an idea what's coming up. I'm not going to read through those. This is more for the board to kind of, you know, kind of get their calendars in order of things that they choose to attend on their availability. So obviously, there's a lot going on. I know you can't make everything, but you know, those that you can make, I appreciate if you guys, I very appreciate you coming out. You guys have done a great job of that this year.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, is there a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, the next board meeting will be May 18 at 6:00 PM here in the high school with DLZ. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you for attending. Thank you for attending.